Meeting of the Kattati Planning Commission to order. And may we have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Ford.
Here.
Vice Commissioner Brady.
Here.
Chair Onines.
Here.
Commissioner Moore.
Here.
Next, we have approval of minutes. The first one being for November 7th, 2016. And I was absent for that meeting, so if anyone has any comments or changes.
I'll move to approve.
Second. You have a roll call on that, please.
Commissioner Ford.
Yes.
Vice Commissioner Brady.
Abstain.
Chair Onines.
Abstain.
Commissioner Moore.
Yes.
Commissioner Hancock.
Yes.
Next, we have approval of the minutes for February 21st of this year. Any alterations or changes for the commission? Move to approve.
Second. And Commissioner Ford.
Yes.
Vice Commissioner Brady.
Yes.
Chair Onines.
Yes.
Commissioner Moore.
Yes.
Commissioner Hancock.
Ms. Parker, do we have any changes to the agenda?
No, Mr. Chairman, no changes.
Thank you. Next, we have oral and written communications. I see we have some written communications that have been given to us.
I believe those communications are all having to do with the matters at hand, so they'll come in under F1. These oral and written communications here might just be for items, or they would be for items not on the agenda.
Okay, thank you. Next, we will open for oral communications and public comment. Anyone like to make a public comment? I beg your pardon, I thought we went through that. We had no changes to the agenda, did we? Go ahead, if you'd like.
So this would be for items that are not on the agenda?
Correct.
Okay.
And I think Jenny just said that hers was...
I apologize.
So we don't have any...
So we have none. Matters at hand. Introduction is a consideration of a request for allocation of Transportation Development Act Article III funds to support development of the bicycle and pedestrian wayfinding signage program. Have we a report from staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name's John Paul Harries. I'm planner with the City of Kattati. So tonight, we're here to talk about two things. Proposed wayfinding, bike and pedestrian wayfinding signage system, development of that system, and then application for Transportation Development Act monies to support development So I want to start with this image, because though this is vehicular signage, I think it's a good place to start talking about signage in general. And I know many, if not all of you, can recall that song from the '60s, "Sign, Sign Everywhere, Sign," which is actually a protest song about signage. And this is a good example of signage that can be done better. So, and I'll just walk through these signs, but the first sign obviously has value. It's informing the drivers where they want to go, and it's giving them direction. And it's placed in a location that's far enough away from the intersection that gives them some decision-making time to respond to the sign. The next sign, if you can read it, says Bike Lane, No Parking. This sign could easily be eliminated. First of all, it's, you're not going to find too many people parking in emerging traffic lane along a red curb, and I've asked, and no one usually parks in that spot. Also, that message would be better communicated with an image of a bike on the actual pavement, so we can get rid of that piece of landscaping. The next sign is another sign that could be easily eliminated. It's a neighborhood watch sign, which, in this particular location, I really don't think serves any deterrent to crime. And it's extremely wordy, you can't read it, and is better located in active neighborhood watch communities, and at like the gateway to those communities, not on the side of a park, intended for vehicles. The next sign says Truck Route, and that one has value, because it's informing the trucks where, you know, our new truck route is. It would, however, be better if we would consolidate it with this first sign. Now, you might have to raise that sign, but it's better when you're informing a driver which direction to turn, that you're also telling them that's the truck route to the left. So we've eliminated 1, 2, 3 signs, and then, I don't know if you can tell, it's difficult in there, but all the way down at the end of that line of signs is another sign, which is one of the city's wayfinding signs. And you can't see it very well, and hopefully you knew where you were going, because by the time you get to that sign, you have to be in the right lane, and it's going to tell you which way to go to get to City Hall. And then, when you turn the corner, this is the next wayfinding sign you'll see. And I want to talk about this sign, and what's wrong with it, and what we hope to improve with our wayfinding. Again, this is a vehicle sign. But I think, obviously, the most obvious thing right away is the choice of hardware and materials that was used, has led to rust stains, smearing down the front of it, the pole is unsightly. And then, if you look at the sign, you know, the question is, who's the audience for the sign? Well, it's clearly a vehicle, vehicular sign, intended for vehicles, but there's way too much information on that sign for a driver to comprehend, when we really want them to be watching to see if there's any pedestrians in the crosswalk that they're approaching. And it's, so, the wording is fine if it were intended for a pedestrian, it's not fine if it's intended for a driver of a vehicle. Also, the top of that sign says City of Kattati, and has, you know, the icons that we use, but it takes up a third of the sign, and it's really too much for that little sign. What we're going to talk about is how you take these icons, or branding, or these ideas of design, and you actually incorporate it into the sign itself, so you don't have to spend sign square inches on, you know, something that's really not necessary. And then, and then just the wordiness of the sign, City Hall, Chamber of Commerce, two blocks ahead, all that information can be communicated with icons, or just a lot less language. And then, the arrow, in this case, actually looks like a house, so it's a little confusing as to what that sign's actually trying to tell you. Oh, and the other thing, and this is especially true for our signs, wayfinding signs that we have, that are facing south, but they're fading, and so not enough thought was gone, was put into, you know, the long-term life of these signs, the materials that were used, and the ink, and the coatings on top of the sign. So broadly, what we're, these are kind of the guiding principles that we're using for this bike and pedestrian signage program. First of all, it'd be user-friendly navigation system. What we wanted to do is to reveal and promote Kattati's assets, our natural assets, our commercial assets, our transportation points. And we wanted to create, basically, a positive first impression, and also a unique sense of place. When you go to communities that have effective wayfinding signage, there is, there's something appealing about it. They've taken time, and it provides a sense of order, cleanliness, and it's helpful, it's beneficial if it's your first time, and often, these type of signs are for a first or unfamiliar visitors, and first-time residents, and it just helps. We want the signs to be unified and harmonious, and we're going to talk about that a little more. And they should be human-scale, because these signs are intended for bikes and pedestrians. And we don't want them, like in that first slide that we showed, we don't want to create more sign clutter, and we don't want the signs to impose. We want all this to complement and be helpful. Obviously, the signs need to inform, direction, destination, and we want them to be long-lasting and vandal-proof as much as possible. And of course, we're trying to encourage walking and biking, and we're trying to encourage exploration. These are big ones. There's probably more that we could come up with. So, also, we want the project to be scalable. This effort is a costly effort, and there'll be a lot of time involved with it, and we don't want it to just end with, you know, the 18 sign locations that I put in the packet. We're looking for future regional connections as we develop the trail system along the Laguna. We also want to be able to serve the Gravenstein Highway Commercial District when that starts to develop, obviously, the residential portions west of Highway 101, when, as we develop more sidewalks and trails over there, and the Commercial Industrial Park, and creating linkages up to there. Also, we want it to scale into what I call in wayfinding tools. This is besides the signs, on the, there is also maps, brochures, there's mobile apps you can use, you can incorporate it into the websites, obviously GPS. There's, that's actually a fairly broad category. And then, also, and then, I think, getting into the vehicles, the first thing we'd want to do is probably use the same type of signage to identify parking, so we get people out of the cars and onto our sidewalks and trails, that's what we're trying to encourage. And then, also, the gateways and routes for vehicles, and just general city signage. So the whole idea is, we start here, we put the effort, and then we can continue to grow through the years. And that's really what this is about. It's about destinations and connections, and there is certainly a lot more lines you could draw on here, you know, going between the various destinations that I put up here. And, but that's what we're trying to achieve, is getting people along the routes, sometimes not always the fastest route, but the best routes, between our various destinations. And this is an example that kind of, you know, coming from this down into a more focused effort that we might be trying to make sure we're getting people from Sonoma State to the Smart Train, down to our downtown hub, and then over to maybe where our brewery is on, in Gravenstein Corridor area. And we want to develop connections between neighborhoods. Now, I just picked street names to describe the neighborhoods here, but you can really, there pretty much are about these five-ish neighborhoods, and we do want to try to develop pedestrian connections and bike connections, and highlight that. And this map is in your packet. And, excuse me. Was it the last page?
Yeah.
On the last page of your packet. And this is, you know, thinking about those connections and destinations, this is an attempt to, can I figure out where, where would be a good spot to start the project? Which locations would be best served? And we could, we can talk about any of these, and we can add to these, and we can take away from these. They're certainly not set in stone. So let's look at some examples of wayfinding signage. This is, I believe it's in Georgia. It communicates some information. I'm not particularly fond of this particular sign, but it's an example. Lake Forest is in, um, uh, North Carolina, and it's another example. This is an example of what we would call like a map, or an informational kiosk-type sign. This is Franklin, Tennessee, and what they've done there. And you can see, there's, there's obviously, there's the information you want to communicate, there's the colors that you want to choose, there's the iconography, like the 1799, and the, what's probably City Hall or Courthouse there. And then, there's the overall shape, and kind of the design features that are built into the shape, as well as the pole, the finials, it's kind of a whole package of design. And then, if you were to go within the community, you would see, you know, continuity between the signage. This is a sign from Adelaide, in Australia, actually, and I like this one. I think it's got a lot going on, but it's clean in its approach, and it uses, makes use of natural materials, it's got, I think, good color, and what's difficult to see is, it's got destinations, and then they're, instead of saying, oh, it's half a mile or a mile, it's telling you it's four minutes of walking, five minutes of walking, which I think encourages people to walk more as opposed to a distance. And then, on the bottom there, it's got the arrows directing you to the various places, and then even includes a small section of the map of that part of the town. So it's an interesting use. Kind of more locally, this is an example of an early schematic design that was put together, actually, for the City of Novato by a company out of Pennsylvania. And when you look at our work schedule, and you see like Phase 1 would be schematic design, this is kind of what we're talking about. This is where the initial goals, where we start developing a collection of choices to bring back to the Design Review Committee, Planning Commission, and, so, this is an example of what you would be considering, what you might be looking at in the future, debating about design and color, and you can look up there, like, in the, where there's that tall pole at the top of it, you can see that they're considering three different design shapes, and each shape actually reflects something in the community. And then, actually, what I'll view, and show you that, this is what they went with. And you can see where it started down here on the right, and then that's the wayfinding sign, it's a little difficult to see in this one, that they have. And this image kind of shows three different signs, and you can see, there's one on the wall, which is explaining the historical structure. It uses the same iconography, the same design as the parking, and then what might be a little more difficult to see is there's a triangular one, kind of right behind that garbage can, which has a map on one side, and then also allows for leaflets and flyers on the other two sides. So, looking at Kattati, I took some photos this morning, actually, and trying to think about, some of the imagery that you see a lot in Kattati, and obviously, this is the new arch, but see the tiles on the right-hand side? And this is a theme that seems to be running throughout Kattati, and you can see it there, along with this side of the new wall. And at our bus stops down at the hub, there's another, playing on the same idea, that obelisk, whoops, excuse me, in the middle of the street, plays with that same idea, as well as the, these kind of low concrete walls right on, on the intersections, plays with that same idea. Here, it's a diamond shape, but it's still playing with that same idea. I'm not suggesting that this is what our signage would have, but it's that kind of continuity of design, uniformity, and developing a unique product. So, this is, this pretty much is right in your packet, but I tried to break down the process into, you know, the stages that would be required. It's an iterative process with the consultant that we would need to help us put the signage together, in terms of coming up with the design, fleshing out costs as we make choices about what designs we want to move towards, and fabrication. So in the beginning, this would be the first fiscal year, 1718, we'd be looking more, deeper analysis of the city's architecture, historical elements, kind of the town imagery, and develop our design concepts. We would prepare the preliminary sign designs, like I showed you that we did for Novato, or they did for Novato. We would also, at this time, start putting together a preliminary budget for the fabrication and installation, so we start gauging, you know, costs before we proceed down the road with sign, designs that we wouldn't support. And I said, at this time, I would anticipate coming to DRC and the Planning Commission with these initial schematics. Second step is sign programming. Now, what do I mean by sign programming? Well, this is where you're actually going out, you're really now saying, this is where we want the sign, here's the message that needs to go on the sign, pointing on this one. Sometimes you need to work out, what do we call things? You know, if you're pointing to that, is it, is it the hub? Is it downtown? Is it La Plaza Park? These are all decisions we'll have to make. And again, this is probably another place where we would come to the DRC and Planning Commission. And also, at this time, we're going to start soliciting cost estimates from fabricators, so that, again, we can hone in on our final design. Design development is finalizing this whole process, location, materials, size, nomenclature. We'd have, we'd get some mockups produced, so we, and we'll actually, at this point, really get down to marking out where precisely the signs would go. And again, we can anticipate meetings right around here also. And then, the last three steps are, you know, now we've done the homework, or we've done all the hard work, and this is the pre-production, these are the actual fabrication documents, these are the construction drawings that you send to a fabricator, it produces the signs that you want. And then, we have the sign fabrication, fabrication, and sign installation, and we anticipate that the sign installation will actually be done by, by our public works staff, unless there is some, I guess, more complicated sign that they would feel has to be farmed out, but I don't, I don't see, I don't anticipate that. And then, I guess, at this point, I will open it up for questions and comments.
Thank you for the presentation. Do you have any questions? Start over here.
Yes, hi. Great to see the overview of the, the street signs. Now, I know why they're fairly confusing, and I enjoy walking and getting out on the bicycle side. I wondered, did you actually at all, in looking at that, consider the signs that are already in Kattati along the Laguna? There's a series of signs that have been put there, and...
Yeah, yeah, I did look at those. Those signs are a little bit different than what we're talking about. Most of the signs in the Laguna are what I would call informational or educational, which certainly serve a purpose, but they're not directing you from, between destinations, and they're not routing you. Does that...
Well, it is, yeah. I mean, I'm just, you didn't use them as one of the examples, though, and I know that they're, you know, they're off the road, so, unless somebody's walking...
Well, I do have photographs of them, but, yeah, no, I did look at them, as well as all of our, our signage in the city, so...
Yeah. One other, one other quick question on here. I mean, in the whereas here, it says that the Transportation Development Act Article III, Pedestrian and Bicycle Project, so are we just considering signs that would be associated with that, or is this also looking at all the signs in the city and incorporating that as part of this process, or...
This part of the process is limited to bike and pedestrians, yes. Certainly, the effort that we spend on the design part of it is something that we want to leverage into the future for all of our signs, or that kind of approach, to, yeah, I guess, all our signs. Thank you. Vicky?
Yeah, I have a couple, I just had a couple of suggestions and a couple of questions. I saw that we didn't have any of the schools, and we didn't have like Thomas Page, so I think that's, because I get a lot of people go, where is Thomas Page? Since it's so far out, so I just know that's one of my suggestions. Another one was, you had one that had a lot of writing, the one that said Franklin, and it's so small, I can't really see, but does that, my question is, does that promote businesses down below, or just government spots? I mean, it's this inch or four, so I just wanted to...
A lot of wayfinding programs, I don't know the funding sources behind Franklin, what they did, but a lot of wayfinding programs are done with businesses and with the chamber. There's often a cooperation, and, you know, both financial and effort-wise, into putting the signage in. It's very common to see wayfinding promote businesses, yes.
Okay. Yeah, and I guess my other question was, it would have to be, that would have, that would have to be decision by the council or something, because, I mean, you promote one business, you don't promote another. That would be an issue for me to have something like that, that I always find that needs to be equitable all the way across. So that'd be something, either we promoted all the businesses in town, or we don't promote any businesses.
I agree, and we do need to be careful, which is why, at this point, we're talking about districts. We're not talking about particular store, we're not talking about particular strip mall.
So mostly, basically, government, we're promoting like Chamber of Commerce here, things like that, neighborhoods...
Neighborhoods, Chamber of Commerce, but our business districts too. I mean, we do want people to...
The districts, not...
Right, right.
Okay.
And transportation, transit.
And one of my other questions was, you're asking, you're talking about getting the consultant. Is the consultant going to be paid out of this grant money? Does that con take up a big chunk of the grant money, or is that, most of this is going to be done in-house?
No, most of the design is going to be done by the consultant. It's really expertise that we don't have.
Okay.
That was my questions.
It might be a later phase, but I know, I think, a couple of years ago, the chamber actually did a lot of research similar to this on a, on a wayfinding plan, and they were really interested in doing some upgrades to the signage. I don't know where they're at now, if they're still interested in doing something like that, but they might be, it might be worth just looping back in with them. I'm not sure if it's relevant to this phase of the project, but at a later point, maybe looping in with them to see, or at least they can do some of that outreach to the business community, to see if there's any interest in doing some type of partnership with signage and direction to the businesses, but I know a couple of years... But I know a couple of years ago, there was a lot of conversation around that. Maybe you have already?
Mr. Chair, if I could, I think it's, that's a great point, as is the point that Commissioner Moore made, that, and JP touched on this, but it's, it's a really, it's a tricky knot of figuring out, once we have responses to the request for proposals, just how broad we can go with this particular leg of it, and how those distinctions begin to break up, and what it looks like. Is it, is it, because it's our hope that we develop something that, as JP alluded to earlier, it could someday replace our gateway signage, could someday replace our park signage, could someday be something that creates uniformity around the city. So, it would be really nice if the money that we get through the grant allows us to go broader as well. But this is based on a very conservative approach of trying to go deep enough to hash out all those design issues, because it's a broad population of folks that we're trying to serve, and so there will be lots of opinions. So, I think we'll see, once we get responses back to the requests for proposals, just how many cycles of the signage we can really implement, if that makes sense.
I want to thank you for your presentation, JP. What I under, what your briefing talked about was really re-signage within the city. And when, when I look, and I think Neil brought this up, what we're talking tonight about is the bicycle and pedestrian wayfinding. How much are we able to stretch funds coming from bicycle and pedestrian wayfinding into the grand scheme that you proposed?
It's pretty specific that this money has to be spent on bicycle and pedestrian. It's, there's not a lot of latitude for other than that. However, I think, as Vicky said, the majority of what our grant request is going to be spent on is the design consultant. So, our hope is in the future, we don't have to do that, so we can take what we've done and immediately, you know, start using parking to start out with, like, directing people to parking, or at the gateway, directing them to our commercial core, or, and then to vehicles. So, in this part, it's not going to result in any vehicle signs being installed, but it will be a design that we can carry forward. That's our hope, certainly. Does that answer your question?
Yes, it did.
Do I have one more question? So, if we replaced a sign in a park, could we use Park and Lou funds for that?
Yeah, we can.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay, I think it's time to open it up for public input. Having a public input.
Thank you. Jenny Blaker, 8166 Arthur Street. Thank you very much for a really interesting presentation. I really enjoyed it. It takes me back to the walkable Khatati days when Dan Burden used to talk about walkable Khatati. I think it was 2005, so it's really exciting to think that something else might grow out of that now. We all know that walking is, is good for people's physical and mental health, and also socially helps develop a sense of place and belonging, a way to meet other people, and improve social and community health, as well as the environmental impacts of reducing fossil fuels pollution, reducing parking congestion. So, I'm really excited that there's going to be an emphasis on bicycling and pedestrian signage. I walk around Khatati to just about everything I need to do here, and cycle to things I need to do in Ronan Park. I find a lot of people don't know about the pedestrian tunnel under Highway 101, out to Thomas Page School, as Lisa said. And also, a lot of people don't know about the Laguna Trail at all, or if they do, they think it ends at Ladybug Park, and don't realize it goes on quite a bit further beyond that. I've taken people who've lived in Khatati for 20 or 30 years on walks along the Laguna, and they said, gosh, I never knew they existed. What a wonderful walk. So, I think there's a lot of, there would be a lot of benefit in having signs, both to help people get around the town, for example, from bus stops, walking towards parks or commercial areas, but also along the Laguna Trail and out to Thomas Page. I also thought of quite a few other places that haven't been mentioned in the list here. For example, along the Smart Trail and the connectors to it, Khatati Creek that goes alongside, that goes under Highway, over Edward Highway, to join up with the main Laguna path, and quite a few others. I could probably send in a list of those. And then, as I, as you were going through the presentation, I thought of a few other things that, as you were speaking, for example, I was noticing that a lot of the current signs are in places that make it really difficult for people in wheelchairs, like they're right in the middle of the sidewalk, and it would be great to be thinking about disabled access at the same time. And, oh, yes, I, as well as, sorry, now I'm thinking of other areas again, as well as the schools, not only Thomas Page School, but also La Fiesta School, because although it's in Ronan Park, a lot of children from Khatati go there. And also, both community gardens, the one across from Oliver's on East Khatati Avenue, and Lydia Commons, which, again, although it's in Ronan Park, a lot of people from Khatati use it. I also noticed, you mentioned some of the signs that show a five-minute walk or a seven-minute walk, which is helpful, but also some of the maps I've seen in other places have a point that shows where you are now, and then rings out from that point, like a five-minute walk, a 10-minute walk, so you can see kind of a distant, a radius that you can walk to. And that helps encourage people to get out of their cars and walk, because often the places are closer than they think. I, that's it for now, I think. But I'm very excited about this, and I'd like to be involved and feed in some information. And I just wanted to mention, I've got, I haven't got enough to give everyone, but I have a Laguna de Santa Rosa area trail guide, which includes on it the trail up to the Laguna headwaters, which isn't listed here. So, maybe I could give one to... I think that's it. Thank you for the opportunity to speak, and I hope, I encourage you to go for the grant and do it. Thank you.
Now, open it up for discussion and deliberation within the commission. Neil?
I'm just wondering, actually, I had an email from Marlena, as public input, saying that she had tried to send it through to the city, and I was wondering if that had got through.
It did. No, I don't think I got one either.
These are all confused. I missed out on the stapled one.
So, so we're actually, thank you. You got it as well. You did something with printing it. So, this is great, sounds good, and looking at it, we've got three people who have emailed in, essentially, I think, supporting, supporting the process. I had a comment also on, it's just on the west side, which I think is what Laurel, Lauren, Lauren brought up, that there's a couple of places on the west side, I think, from the school, if we were to think of this, from the schools where there's a lot of parents come in, and a sign there that would say, you know, Khatati Tunnel, probably would get a lot of visibility to, to parents. And, oh, there might be something walkable. And I think we're also doing some reformatting of the sidewalks on the west side of Khatati. So, I think there's another opportunity on there to point back to that tunnel. And I think that tunnel is a really amazing resource to be able to get between, between Khatati. So, just as a general comment, I mean, I liked the idea of some signs for time to walk. I know this really isn't that part of the discussion, but, so at this point, we're just saying, do we agree with this or not? And so, I'd have to say, yes, I do. I think it's a very good idea. Surprise, surprise, I'm supporting it. I cycle a lot and walk a lot around Khatati. So, I guess I'll leave it at that, but I appreciate all the other ideas coming in, and there'll be an opportunity later on to, to talk about that.
Is there more?
So, I, I do, I, I agree with, with Neil. I think this is great. I do agree that we have too much signage. I've said it for years, that people don't tend to look at signs when there's 15 in a row. It's, it's overkill. And you know how, has great signage? Is Disneyland. And, you know, I mean, I, I've gone there a million times as a kid, and they do, they just have really, really great signage, and it's one of those things where you always know where you're at, because there's always something to, to show you. So, I mean, I don't know. I mean, that's just something that I just remember, that you could always find your way in Disneyland. And so, that might be just be a reference. I mean, I know we probably don't want to do Disneyland kind of stuff, but these have great signage. So, but yeah, I totally agree. And, and again, with the, the tunnel, I don't think too many people know about the tunnel. And so, that might be a wonderful thing to kind of promote. And not only that, but promote people walking there, because I think the more people use that, the less kind of problems happen when things are well-used. It's kind of like the path behind my house. It's a very well-used path, and so there's not a lot of issues around that path, because it's walked so much. So, yeah, I'm totally in favor of this.
Mr. Ford?
I completely agree. Perfect use for TDA III grant. And yes, I also have ideas about places, but those will wait till the design meetings.
Okay. Yeah, I agree, and yeah, I have some ideas too, but I think that's later on, but I think this is a great use of the grant. And, you know, I'm excited to hear some of the ideas come out from you tonight, too. And, yeah, Disney does have great signage. Maybe instead of hidden Mickey's, we can come up with some other hidden charms for our town as well, that are relevant. And, yeah, I mean, I think, you know, to find ways that, you know, people can engage, like, in our wayfinding sign, I think would be exciting for us. And, you know, if it's not in the business community, in that way, maybe there's, like, another way they can get involved, or it's a way to, I think, like, the signage has always been an issue with the business community, like, in not understanding or just not participating with the city. So, if it's, if it's not in this way, maybe there's, like, another way we can involve them in the conversation around signage. Maybe it's not wayfinding, but it's, you know, something else. So, you know, but I think it's, this is, like, a kind of a fun one to get involved in, so maybe there's, there's another way we can be participatory and inclusive in that piece. But this is great.
I add my comments positive to this. I think we're talking about a macro approach first, and then we'll get down to the details. And that's where the devil lies, of course. But I have nothing but support for what we're doing. Now, we opened it up to questions to the staff from the commission. Are there any questions? Then we're open for a motion.
I need to approve the resolution number PC...
Can you get your mic on, Scott?
I move to, move to approve the, or put it forward, the resolution number PC 2017-3. Do you want it all read out, or is that sufficient?
Do you need that read out or not? Yes.
A resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Khatati recommending city council authorize a request for allocation of Transportation Development Act, Article Three, TDA III, funds to support development of a bicycle and pedestrian wayfinding signage program in fiscal years 2017, 18, 2018, 19, and 2019, 20.
We have a motion and a second. We have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Ford?
Yes.
Vice Commissioner Brady?
Yes.
Chair O'Neill?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
And Commissioner Hancock?
Yes.
Okay, the motion carries. Next, we have reports by staff. Ms. Parker?
Thank you very much for that. A couple of things to update the commission on. The 100 Valparaiso project is scheduled to go before the city council on March 28th, so to close that loop. We're probably also going to be coming back to you as the B-PAC at some point in the future on dealing specifically with safety projects. The engineering department's putting together a consultant package to sort of identify some of the larger safety issues in the city. And so, as the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee, they want to get input from you all on that. It's very early in the process, so we don't really know what it's going to look like yet, but your work as the B-PAC continues. We're just beginning our strategic planning and for fiscal year 17, 18, and we're more than likely going to have to tackle some housing issues. There's just so many housing bills pending right now before the state legislature that something's bound to pass. So, I think we're going to be revisiting housing a lot in 17, 18, so just kind of a heads-up about that. The next item, actually, that'll be coming to you is an accessory dwelling unit ordinance that actually JP worked on as well. That's to address changes in state law that are meant to make it easier to provide second units and conversions that allow for second units. So, that'll be your next big item. We have a few residential projects that are in the pipeline and getting closed, but they'll be going to the DRC first, so nothing immediate for you all. And we did the last, the final inspections on the last three units over on Ward Drive, the Altman Acres subdivision over there, so you've probably seen them being constructed, but those are, two of them are finalized, one has a few items to finish up, but those are a nice addition to the community, I think. So, they look nice, they did a good job with them, and the colors are bright, so that's all good. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. Oh, I'm sorry, there was one thing I wanted to come back to you all on about the streetlights. The city engineer is looking into the ability, the exact cause, and then there, and follow on from that, the ability of city workers to fix the, what appears to be paint peeling. And he doesn't have an answer on that yet, doesn't know exactly what's causing it, so not sure that city staff can, can fix that, but he is in the process of trying to figure that out. So, more on that in the future.
Thank you.
Can I, can I ask some questions? So, on that, the housing bills, they might require us to, what, revise the housing element, or to actually be proactive about developing some affordable housing, or kinds of things?
You know, they run the gamut. Without, without a funding source, it would be hard to tell us that we've got to produce the units. But the bills that are out there right now run the gamut of, from tweaks to density bonus all the way to local agencies abdicating housing authority to the state. So, it's, it, there's a lot of them out there, and I think post-redevelopment, they're just really trying to figure out how to provide much-needed housing. We did have an applicant, two applicants now, for the Village Walk Affordable Units. So, those are, they've sold at least six units out there now, and have the two, have two of the affordable ones on, on their list for sales, so, so we'll see how quickly we can get a household in there.
And I have one more on the, the B-PAC theme. Is, is somebody from the city representing? Is, is somebody from the city representing us on the countywide B-PAC these days, is one of you?
John Paul Harries.
Okay, great. And we don't have a citizen member right now?
We do not.
Okay. Have we advertised for that, tried to get one? Because I, I was that person for a while, and I never got replaced as the-
It's actually a committee of staff, majority staff, and I don't know that there are citizen positions on there, I think you-
Well, that would be a change. It always was, each, each jurisdiction had one staff member and one citizen member. Like, if Tim Hentel is still there from Roanoke Park, he's the citizen member from Roanoke Park, and Sebastopol and Santa Rosa have always had non-staff members.
Yeah, I'll let JP correct me if I'm wrong, but the meetings that I've gone to, which were mostly before JP got here, they, they had not done that, they had stopped doing that.
I think the only, and it's just in terms of who attended the meetings, that I've seen that's not a city staff, or county staff, or someone from the Bicycle Coalition, and another one from Safe Routes to Schools. So, they're, they're actively involved in bike and pedestrian issues outside of just being an interested citizen, so I haven't seen, seen that.
All right.
I don't know if I can add something. I mean, the position was open for a number of years, and on one of the cycles, I actually put my name forward, and it was suddenly withdrawn. I didn't take it personally, but I thought that somebody else is stepping up to it, but-
Well, I could certainly, I could certainly look into it. I haven't asked, you know, what the membership roster is supposed to be, but I-
I'm not calling here.
We're going to have a meeting on the 28th, and I can, I can ask there, or I can also call Dana tomorrow, too.
Yeah, that is interesting, because we, as long as I've been here, I did not realize that was the structure of that committee, so either they changed it right around the time I came, or, or they just haven't said, "Hey, hey, where's your citizen?" So, we will look into that.
Okay.
I, if I could add one more thing, I'm sorry, I forgot. If anyone knows someone with landscape expertise, Lauren has been advertising for a vacant position on the Design Review Committee for that particular discipline, so we're still looking.
Somebody listening to Qatati that has that?
I've tried, he's not interested.
Okay, that finishes our reports by staff. Do we have any reports by Commission?
I, I could report on going to the SSU conference, I know you gave your input sort of last time, but this was in December, but what's really stood out for me was a presentation by somebody from ABAG, so it was an economist statistician, Emiriam Chong, and basically, she gave a fairly gloomy view of what had been happening with wages for the Bay Area, and that particularly over the last 10 years, the middle wage income groups had gone down dramatically. So, and by that, I mean 6%. So, that was just a view that she was putting forward, and saying that, that probably implied that local government needed to try and do more with less, is the way that she was putting it. But the, she said, in a high-wage area, for 2005 to 2010, there'd been a 4% increase in wages, but then from 2010 to 2015, it'd been flat. So, generally, across the Bay Area, even though there's been a lot of jobs, they were implying that, that hadn't really had an impact from there, though we do see a lot of house, house prices go up, so I don't know how to read that, but she said, strong-leading industries with the Bay Area, but very volatile.
Thank you. Is there more?
One very brief report. The new Flash and Crosswalk at Page Street and Old Redwood Highway, if you could pass on to engineering, that one of those flashers is dead already, and hopefully, it's a warranty service issue.
I had a question regarding the peeling paint, and my only thought was under warranty. It seems like we didn't purchase those that long ago, and they seem to be deteriorating rather quickly, and I'd like to make sure that, there should be some sort of warranty on that. The other item I had is that, when we open and report by Commission, could, could it be recorded, and could we bring it up so that it just doesn't drop? You brought, for example, I brought up the paint, peeling paint, and you brought, and you responded, but sometimes we bring things up, and they just kind of drop. So, in the future, if we bring up an item, could it be recorded and put in the minutes, so that we can discuss it? It might be no progress, or it might be drop-dead, but-
Sure, that's probably a good way to track it.
Please?
Mm-hmm.
Is there any other business before the Commission?
No, I'm just going to say, I appreciate that, because I did have a couple of items that came through, and they haven't been, nothing has been done on it, so.
It hurts her feelings, doesn't it?
It doesn't hurt my feelings, I have somebody I live with that I can be in his ear, but-
If you want to remind us, we can-
You know, mine was just about the tree removal, about trying to get something going, about, you know, at least giving a notice for new, new residents when they come in, when they know to turn their water on. I think just knowing the tree ordinance of not being, chopping down every tree in the first week that you're there.
I do have that on my to-do list.
Yeah. I mean, it's just one of those things, I just think it's an easy fit. And we've just had so many new neighbors in the past six months that have come in, and immediately, they start doing landscaping, and boom, the trees go down. So, and it's sad, it's sad to see, and they, and they don't, they just don't have a clue, you know, that there's a tree ordinance, so.
So, in the future, we'll have a way of tracking those questions?
That would be great, I would love that.
There being no other business, call for adjournment.